We're good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here. We are having the last regular council meeting for the month of June. Seems like we just had the first one yesterday. Time flies. So I'm going to call a meeting to order and we will follow our regular ritual. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Please stand as we pay tribute to our national symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
What a privilege it is, Lord, to come before you on behalf of these men and women who are serving their community. Lord, you have blessed us. We all have felt your blessings in our lives. We're grateful for them. And I thank you for the way these men and women take this job seriously, that they dedicate their lives to it in order to help be, help our little haven here in the Valley of Plenty to be a safe zone, a place that we don't have to worry about bombs falling on our heads, a place where we don't have to worry about being kidnapped and things like that. We just ask you, Lord, to continue to work through these people, through our police force, our fire department, through all the individuals that serve this county, this community, this city, and just ask you, Father, to give them strength, give them courage, give them wisdom, help them to work together, help them to have unity of mind and soul and purpose. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Are there any good faith amendments to the agenda? Something that is an emergency, needs to be on, whatever reason, getting on, maybe timing? Hearing none. Any declarations of conflicts of interest on anything we'll be voting tonight? Of course, we have a hangar lease issue, one terminating, two, and then the other lease popping up. And we do have two individuals for bartender permits. Is there any declaration of a discussion outside the open meeting on something that we're going to vote on tonight? Were you, were cornered and people were asking you about hangar leases or whatever. Hearing none. Are there any announcements for the good of the order? Hearing none. Going on to item eight, the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for 10 June. The count's payable and as I indicated, the two bartenders, you took care of the count's payable, right? Thank you so much. The Michelle Brockett and Kira Tibbetts. Chair, will you entertain a motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd make a motion and we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. The main motion was made by Councilor Ruzinkin to accept the consent agenda as presented. The second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, we do have Tom on the phone. I'm sorry. Thank you. That's not a three, that's not a five-second delay like there is for President Henderson. You must have pretty good connection in DC. All right. And those opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Five zip. All right. The next item is the approval of the hangar lease between RGT Investments LLC and the City of Emmett. Mr. Friedmeyer.
How is everybody?
Hello.
So, pretty self-explanatory. Got a hangar lease agreement between RFT Investments LLC and City of Emmett with the mayor to sign.
And then, once we approve that, determination?
The termination.
Yeah.
Yes.
It seems hypothetical, but we have to approve the positive lease.
Right.
Right.
Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement between RFT Investments LLC and the City of Emmett with the mayor to sign.
Second. I want to make sure that that's, because the, is it RFT? Yes. That's what it says.
It says RGT.
Yeah. I was looking off the, RFT, all right.
I was looking off.
That's okay. It's just a typo. All right. Main motion was made by President Henderson to approve the hangar lease between RFT Investments LLC and the City of Emmett with the mayor to sign and Counselor Ruzinkin seconded the motion. At least, that's what I, is there any further discussion with regard to the lease?
Mayor.
Yes.
Just a quick question. I know a lot of these dates are not filled in. Is that only because we haven't made the motion yet? Is that why those, so once we approve motion, then you put those dates in there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay. Counselor Butler, how do you vote?
Yay.
Is that yay?
That is a y.
Yay. Thank you. Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Counselor Harris is excused. Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Ruzinkin.
Yay.
Yay. Five yays, no nays, one excused or absent. Motion carries. Now, going on to the approval of the termination of the hangar lease between Tracy Arberris and the City of Lewiston. Do you have anything to add?
Nope. Pretty self-explanatory.
Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion. We approve the termination of hangar lease between Tracy Arberris and the City of Emmett.
I'll second it. All right. Main motion was made by President Henderson to approve the termination of the hangar lease between Tracy Arberris and the City of Emmett. Obviously, the mayor to sign.
Yes.
And the second was made by Counselor Ruzinkin. Is there any further discussion? President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler.
Yay. Yay, yay, yay.
All right. Yay. Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Harris is absent but excused. Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Yay. And Counselor Ruzinkin.
Yay.
Yay. Five yays, one absent, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. So, going on to activity reports.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselor.
Hello.
You have my report. Are there any questions?
Mayor. Frank, is there any information you can share about the complex or whatever is supposed to be, being built besides Albertson's? Has anybody come forward for any building there?
No. No building permits. They had a bank, Washington Mutual Bank, was looking at it and I don't know if they must have walked away because there's another applicant looking at it. They want to modify Lot 7, make it a little bit smaller to accommodate them, and it's just a mess. I'll be honest with you. So I sent my information back, what they could possibly do, and I required them to get a survey on board to figure out what they want to propose to me, and I have not seen anything back.
Have you heard from the developers? Why that's not progressing any better?
Have not heard anything from the developers. No, just the one lot, Lot 7, which that was the one that Washington Mutual was looking at also. So that's all I know is what, is kind of.
Where's Lot 7?
Lot 7 is the access road that goes in. It would be the lot immediately to the east of that. That's the last lot in Phase 1. And then Phase 2 will have four more lots if they get to that point.
Okay.
Yeah. Good? Thank you.
All right. One quarter.
Okay. You have my report and you also have the Motley Financial Forma. Do you have any questions concerning it? I have changed the document just a little bit and included impact fee revenue down there so you can see how we're growing with that now. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a deputy clerk. Is that, do I understand that correctly? She resigned or left?
She did. June 10th was her last day and she went, she's over in New Plymouth now, working for the City of New Plymouth.
So is that a position you'll be filling or?
I'm evaluating that currently. And right now, I'm just distributed in job duties, opportunity for some cross-training too, so.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Fire.
Mayor, Counsel, you've been copying my report. Just one thing to bring you up to date on. It says it in here, but we did deploy to California. We sent our light brush truck down to just outside of Fresno. They're on what's called a prepo, so they're pre-positioned down there in case anything kicks off. So they will be, their last day of work will be the 3rd and they'll be traveling back that, that day. And then we should have them back in town by the 4th of July. So that'll be a good resource to have. And they're learning a lot and we're learning a lot. A lot of work, got put into that, about eight years' worth of work to get us to that point, so, yep. Pretty excited.
How many people went down?
Two.
Two.
Beau Patterson, who, it took him eight years to get his engine boss through the auto department of lands, but he's signed off now, so, and that was his big goal. And so now he's training up the next crop of wildland firefighters for us and he has been doing phenomenal with in-house training with them. So we are pretty much a structured department, but when it comes to wildland, it's something that we've been working a lot on this year so that we conserve our community broader than just Emmett. And after this role, we'll have to see. I'd like to keep them more local after this, so there'll probably be needs down there, but we'd like to keep, like the governor has been pushing, to keep auto resources as local as possible. So we're following that, that line, that approach to it. So, questions?
Mayor. So, is it like a just state, in case a fire happens, or is actually active fire that you may need to go to?
Nope. No active fire. It's just a pre-position. So they pay hourly for the engine to be down there. So it's not 24 hours a day like it is with an EMAC where they pay the, for the apparatus and for the people. This one, they just pay for the hours that they're working. So it's not as, I don't want to say lucrative, it's, that's not the term, and I would get my hand slapped by, you know, the powers that be, but it's, it, they're, they're down there just working those hours and that's when we get reimbursed for that.
So the truck and the individual firefighters are being paid hourly or just the truck itself?
Just the truck itself and then we pay them from the general fund and then when the check comes in, which they're really good about getting those, those dollars back to us, it's about a two-week turnaround once they get back. So then we'll get that check and then put it back into general, general fund.
And one more question. Have you had any luck on another replacement fire truck yet?
It's a great question. I, there's a local company, a brand-new company out of Boise that started making type-1 fire engines. Type-1 fire engines are your, your, they sit there and they pump water, they don't move, they don't pump and roll, they're not a wildland engine. That's what they've made so far. And they want to be, they want to sell us their first engine that'll be a pump and roll. Just have to evaluate whether that's going to be a good deal for us or not, you know, it's, yeah, I'm going to have to evaluate the company pretty hard to do it. But they do have an in-house engineer, which is one of those things that I think is very important to have, and they've got a really good fabrication gentleman and all the people that are running that company came over from BME Boise Mobile Equipment, which has made fire trucks for decades. So, lot to see. But I have talked to Eagle. I'm trying to figure out if they have anything that would serve us for in the interim period, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. You have my report. Any questions for me?
Mayor. Yes. How did the pie sales go?
We did really well. Thank you for asking. We ended up with just over $1,900 for, for the, the three days, so that's a lot of pie, a lot of dollar-a-bag books. A lot of pie. Anyway, we, we did good and I think everybody that came in was able to get something cherry to snack on and make their trip to Cherry Festival special.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel and Mayor, you have my report. The one thing that I'd like to discuss is that cruise night is coming up. It's on the 19th. Along with cruise night this year, the truck invasion that they have over at the racetrack or the mill property is also on the same day. In fact, it's on that morning from 10 to 4 is what the hours are posted as, and then it's the next day also. I know in the past, the next day hasn't been a big issue with us, but it has been a very busy time over there. Last year, we paid overtime to a number of officers to run traffic during that event and we had a lot of, a lot of traffic stopped. We were very busy over there. So this year, besides just requesting for the other agencies to come over for cruise night, they're also, we are also requesting ISP to have their traffic teams come over in the morning. And they not only will be working, they won't necessarily be working near the mill, but they will be working on the highway, on Highway 16 where they come in and on Highway West, 52 also. So that's how we're, we're asking for that. I just sent that letter out yesterday, I believe we sent those out, so we don't know what the response is yet.
Mayor. I have a question for you, Chief. So if there's a road hazard, I don't know, maybe you or Brian can answer it, but the road hazard for vision is a bush that has overgrown over a fence and you, when you look a direction and you can't see what's oncoming traffic, would that be something I addressed with you, with Brian?
It's ordinance.
Oh, you? Mr. Friedmeyer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I guess you'll take it.
If there is a site triangle issue there, and yes, we are ordinance in the past and the officers handle ordinance, we handled those also. But they have the ability to be able to remove that and, and the city does choose to remove it when it is an obstruction.
Correct.
It's inside a fence. There's two of them close by senior citizens and they're inside the fences, but they've overgrown the fences going out and it is really hard.
Seventh, Seventh?
Seven, yeah. Yeah. And there's also one at Hawthorne and Seventh.
Okay.
If you look to the west on that corner and if you've come out senior citizen, you want to go to the left, so you'd be going northbound, southbound, you can't see that bush just gotten really large, so.
So you'll look at those and then if they aren't something you take care of, let me know and we'll get the ordinance officer on.
Okay. Chief.
Yep. You're welcome.
Mayor, Counsel, you have my reports. Any questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I just want to compliment the pickle courts, pickleball court look fantastic. I've been by there a few times and they are busy.
Yeah. Yes.
It's packed every time I've gone by.
Yes.
It's good to see.
Yeah, really good to see. I hope we can add more stuff in the future out in the park for everybody to be out there on.
Mayor.
Yes.
The Army Corps of Engineers levy concerns, are those kind of getting wrapped up? Are you kind of done with those?
I'm still waiting for the river to drop. Because we like to try and attack it when it's at the lowest so we can get all the way down to the, you know, lowest part of the river, so I'm just waiting.
And they're okay with that?
Yes. Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
I forgot to ask you before, did you find the sprinkler head that I told you about?
Yes, we did.
Okay. My husb, I didn't know exactly where it was. My husband said he drove by and it was.
Yeah. No. I sent the guys over as soon as you texted me, so.
Okay. Good.
The artesian well, we had.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
And last but not least, Mr. Comett.
Mayor and Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That takes care of 1 through 10. We're going to segue into our budget workshop, so I'm going to ask some of the directors to come on out in case there are questions.
Do we need to do a huddle?
Whoop, whoop.
Break. Girls on this side. There's, there's only two of us. Okay. It's time to start our budget process. So as normal, we go through our revenues first. These revenues aren't exactly accurate at this point, which you guys know that, that's why this is a workshop. I should have some more definite numbers maybe in another week. I did contact the county and they're working on their end. Thought I might have something by today I could share, but it didn't come through. So again, this is a rough draft at this point, but it's time to ask questions and get an understanding of where we're headed this year. So going down the list, are there anything that pops out to anybody at this point that you would like explained?
The, the one for me was the school resource officer.
Okay.
Increased $150,000. So the total is 180, coming from the school back to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. So what is happening there is the school is able to, to get two grants for two officers. So that's going to increase that revenue that we get from them to cover two SRO officers.
Amount of dollars is quite high.
It is, yes.
That's very nice, yeah.
And Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't believe so, Mel.
So that, that'll increase your staffing, one position?
That's what we want to do, correct. Increase the staff, yes.
And this is a three-year?
It's a three-year.
Three-year commitment?
And we're only already one year in on the first one.
Okay.
And then this one will, one will start this August.
And then something that I want to draw your attention to is the bartender license category. We received recent information from our city attorney that on July 1st, we will not be able to do bartender permits. The occupa, what was it called, Mayor? Occupational licenses. We're no longer able to sell occupational licenses, which bartenders are under that Might be an issue with our business licenses too. Don't know yet, but July 1st, some things changed, so we're working on that. So that income might just go away. We don't know at this point.
Mayor.
Yes.
I forgot to ask about the usable fund balance. I know I asked that to you because I'm not sure quite what that is, but we're going, taking that clear away or is that just something, is that what comes out of savings to go in?
Correct.
Help balance things out?
Usually, we use that category if we're going to be having a major project of some sort, like building repair or something like that, that's an abnormal expense, a one-time expense, then we try to draw that from the savings account to cover that because it's just a one-time hit rather than an operational side.
So will this, this could possibly change also if Chief Christensen finds a fire truck and he needs to transfer money in, or would you do that at a temporary time?
I don't have it planned that way in here. We do have income plan for deployment revenue that is, that is being brought in and that's down further in the document under general fund. But we don't have the fire truck in there yet. So I think that would be something that Counsel would approve at the time if we get one this year, because it may not even be this year from how I understand things are working right now.
All right.
Any other questions? Anything that stands out to you that you would like to discuss from the norm? There is a category for park development, an extra $50,000. Steve, do you want to explain what that's for?
Yeah. We're, we're going to be trying to do.
Chief Cucker, come up.
So we're going to be trying to, with some of the developments that are coming in, if there is a park in relative closeness, we have like some open space requirements that we'll be able to do like in lieu of, so if they are not doing their open space, it'll go to that and then that can only go to just our parks to help, you know, update our parks and, and be able to do stuff in our parks. And we're kind of just in the mid-planning part of that, so.
So would that be kind of like an impact fee per se? I mean, in a way, if, and they can't provide something, then they would just provide the city with some funding to help benefit, amplify our parks?
Yes. And it would only be able to be used in the parks.
For parks.
Yeah. So in a sense, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but no.
In lieu of is, is a traditional vehicle that's used in the development agreements or subdivisions.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So do we want to continue with general fund? Are we okay to move forward to the next category? We're good? Okay. So roads and streets, that pretty much didn't change much at all. You can see on the bottom line, there's not much change where it costs. The only big train, changes in the house bills, where they took money from one category and put them into another category. So you'll see a big deficit of $71,000 under the 311001 for the house bill, 312 and 362. But yet, down below in highway user funds, they had a gain of 48. So there was just some switching around of money at the legislature this last year. Any other questions for that department? Any discussion about anything currently on there?
Mayor. Yes. The designated donations went to zero. Is that a?
Alice? Yes. So we, we added that into our budget for this current year. We have several CDs that have been donated to the library over the years. They are designated donations and so in order to use those, we need to put it into that designated donation line item so that those funds are used for the purpose that the donor gave us. So with this year, we use those to help balance our budget so that we could continue supplying books and resources and things for the, for the community. I don't see any of the, a need, we, we try to use those CDs very, very sparingly, but with our courier, kind of a last-minute courier that came in and was allowed for us to be able to join that, that all played a role in needing to have some designated funds to, to use to balance our budget. Don't see anything coming down the pipes that we would need anything like that for, but it's a good line to keep in there so that if we do that and we make sure that we use those funds accordingly to the, what they're needed.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
And I don't know if this is where I should ask, maybe I, I just wondered if there is a, a cost. I know that the paper was reaching out to the library to see if there was somewhere to house all of the papers that were going to just be gone. Is that something that you can do without like a giant expense or is that a, not a possibility?
You know, we are, we're still talking with Dell and trying to brainstorm different ideas to try to, you know, definitely preserve those. That's a historical item of value for this community to always have. Part of what we are negotiating and we have talked about is actually maybe. talked about is actually maybe a shelving unit that would actually be built specifically for them, because they are quite large, and it's not really anything that a regular library bookshelf can hold. So we're kind of working on that. Part of, you know, being able to house those would be for them to provide a means, perhaps the same case that they're being held in now, that could be transferred over into an area. So we're still kind of negotiating on, on what we can do, but we certainly want to make that work if we can. Yes, absolutely. Okay, cemetery, not much change there. Next up is water. Not a huge change in that category from the prior year. Collections, of course, will go up, because we have more properties to maintain. We have more properties to give water to and charge. So those revenues have gone up a bit, but...
Yes, so we have water collections going up, are close to the same, but water meter installation went down quite a bit. Is that, do they not work together kind of, or?
Mr. Freemeyer.
So water meter installations, they can, the water collections and the water meter installations can kind of change. So we'll probably be doing less like our two-inch or our bigger water meters and more residential. So that's probably where that, you're seeing that change.
Different sizes?
Yeah, because, yeah, like our costs, I think, is like $4,000 for like a residential meter, and I think it's like close to 11 for a commercial, yeah. Yeah. Sewer, no real big changes there either. Same kind of with the collections and the sewer hookup fees are, the sewer hookup fees are definitely going to be higher. And then dumping fees are higher. We've just received more, more stuff out of the wastewater plants, so. And everything else should be pretty relatively close to the same.
Growing well.
Yeah. Anything, any other questions?
Okay, that brings us down to sanitation. Pretty much the same story there. More households to service, so more revenue coming in.
I mean...
Yes.
So I noticed on all of these, it looks like the interest income is all getting a lot bigger in all these.
Every year, it gets bigger.
Interest is helping us some, or is it because of the dollar amount we have in there?
It's the amount that we have in there. It's the amount that we have saved. So now we're earning interest on our interest almost, so, you know, we're growing. And you can tell that by the financial statement. If you look in the investments category on that left-hand side, it'll just show you how much each department has in our LGIP savings. Okay, now we're at utility technology fund, our new, new one, our new baby. Nothing there, or question?
Same thing on the IT, or collections, went from $90,000 by the $20,000?
Yeah, so a couple of things, we're cleaning up some of these categories. We have some redundant categories, so you'll see some of these lines disappear this next budget year. But one of the hardest things to project for us, and I way over-projected when I said $90,000, is not knowing the pace at which they're constructing homes, right? So this year, I made sure to go super-conservative, and it is very conservative, especially with the multiple subdivisions that we're already in that haven't actually even pulled like their first building permit. And then also another pretty good-sized subdivision that's coming in behind Dagger Falls that we'll be in as well. So, yeah, totally overshot it the first year, thinking we would have a lot more homes built, and so we pulled that way back this year to be much more conservative and fall in line with what we'll see. Only thing that we can predict is what happens with the housing market.
So it sounds like this year very well could go projected way, we could project it low, but it could go very high.
It could, absolutely, yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I guess that kind of brings us to the end.
In impact fees, I like to... Staffing to know also what money they have. The woman that has came in already to the city?
In the financial statement that I gave, that category will show you divided out which fire, roads, and police on what they've gained so far through May. So each month, when those funds come in, I take all those funds and I transfer them over to an LGIP, so they are totally separate from being used. And so I just pass them through and put them on over here, and then that's the category that you'll see on your financial statement to keep track of them. So those will earn interest too.
Awesome.
Okay, I guess, is that a, I'm sorry, what?
Do you dream numbers?
You think? Do we wrap it up? Any more general questions? Anything, Mayor, you would like to add for plans, future plans, or?
In a couple of weeks, you should have good numbers from the county.
Actually, the numbers are only, the numbers are July 21st when they're required to get them to me, but they usually get them to me before that. So by our next meeting in another two weeks, I'll have some more solid numbers, because we'll be going over expenses with that. So it'll be more a balanced platform here.
Mayor? And that's the property tax, the $2.1 million, is that the one that's estimated?
It's just a guess, my guess.
Is that the only one that's kind of an estimate, or is that the?
All of them are estimates under the property tax.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you look on the back, it's got a breakdown on the property tax by department, and so that, you know, 2.5 is what I estimate overall for all departments. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to number 12, which indicates adjournment. Mayor? Yes, sir. Do you want the motion to adjourn? All right.
Second.
All right. Motion to adjourn was made by Counsel Ruzinkin, seconded by...